Everything's together.
Hello, can you hear me?
You're a little quiet.
Recording in progress.
Is that a little better for the audio?
It's still a little quiet. That might be loud.
Testing, testing, one, two, three.
Yes, we are getting a lot of feedback from your mic, but it's pretty good. All right, Chair.
Ready to go?
Yes.
Great. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming today. We will call to order this meeting of the Powell River Regional Hospital District Committee of the Hole for Thursday, April fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, at three forty-five P. M. And I'm very grateful to acknowledge that we are holding this meeting within the traditional territory of Plum and Peoples, our friends, neighbors, colleagues. So we have, um, do we have anyone away with leave today? I don't see Director Luofu.
Uh, she's not with us currently. I haven't received notification.
Okay. So she may join us yet. Okay, so we have an agenda before us. Are there any additions or deletions to that agenda? Seeing no, uh, no volunteers, a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. I see hands there, Director Dowd and Director McCormick. Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing no hands, all in favor? Any opposed? I think that's carried unanimous. We have the minutes from the Regional Hospital District Committee of the Hole meeting March the tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Are there any corrections or errors or omissions or changes? If there are no changes or amendments, then a motion to adopt those minutes as presented. Director Fall and Director Brander, any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Carried, thank you. Okay, so moving on to delegations and inquiries, we have four point one, Robert Fitzpatrick and Sean Slarchuk, sorry, McLatt Recovery Society and Hannah Leland, Leland Architecture, uh, regarding renovation plans for the former Saint John Ambulance Building at fifty-nine oh seven Arbuthnot Avenue. So, um, typically delegations are about ten minutes and then questions, uh, follow from the members of the Assembly after that, as long as it takes, but, um, you can take it away now.
Thank you very much. Um, hello, thank you for allowing our delegation to address the Regional Hospital District Committee of the Hole today. Uh, we appreciate your time. My name is Robert Fitzpatrick, Director of Operations at McLatt Recovery Society. We are also joined by our founding board member, Sean Su Starchak, as well as Hannah Layland, a valued member of our architectural team. For anyone not familiar with McLatt Society, we are the only nonprofit residential treatment, uh, service on the Sunshine Coast from Langdale to Lund. We currently serve male clients aged nineteen and older requiring treatment for substance use disorder with plans to expand to serving women in the coming years. Our mandate is to provide high-quality evidence-based services to marginalized groups and promote wellness within the community. McLatt Recovery Society came before the regional district, uh, members on November twenty-eighth, two thousand and nineteen, to request approval for a long-term lease agreement for use of the property located at five nine oh seven Arbuthnot Avenue. The lease was accepted with the condition that all renovations must be approved by the regional hospital district before construction commences. Today, we are requesting approval for renovation plans. At that time, McLatt Society board members felt that the best use of the building would be for secondary care, serving clients who had already graduated in the primary stage of treatment, to reside at the Arbuthnot's location while receiving ongoing supports. Since then, McLatt Society has grown and matured through the many trials that we've all experienced over the last two years. Through much discussion and consideration, we have concluded that the best use of the Arbuthnot's facility would be for primary care residents. We will continue to offer primary care at the McGuffey location as well. This will nearly double our bed capacity, resulting in much shorter wait times for our clients seeking this essential service. We have found that the demand for primary care has outpaced the demand for secondary care, and we find ourselves with long wait lists at a time when our services are so desperately needed. Individuals struggling from drug and alcohol addiction come from nearly all walks of life, and in recent years with a pandemic and opioid crisis, the need for recovery centers have never been so vital. Canadian adults saw a twenty-five percent increase in drinking during the pandemic. The Canadian Institute for Health Information reports that during the first year of the pandemic, there was a ninety-five percent increase in apparent opioid, uh, toxicity deaths with a total of seven thousand two hundred and twenty-four deaths nationwide compared to the year before of three thousand seven hundred and eleven deaths. Since then, deaths have remained high. When the lease agreement was originally approved, the regional hospital district requested that we host a public engagement with local residents living in the vicinity of the property. We subsequently held a public forum where local residents were invited to ask questions and discuss the various aspects of our plans. As a result of our desire to change the use of the building from secondary care to primary care, we've planned for another public engagement, which we will hold within the next month. If the plan of, oh, sorry, if the change of use is approved by the members today. The building renovations will begin once we have, uh, the building permits in place, which are currently under review with the city of Powell River. We expect to have renovations completed and be fully operational by July first, two thousand and twenty-three. The total cost of the upgrade will be approximately four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I will now invite Hannah Layland to give a brief description of the planned changes to the building's interior spaces to better suit the ten residents who will be living on site. Sean Su Starchak will be on hand as well to help answer questions, um, with any follow-up questions that you may have. Thank you.
Can everyone hear me? Um, hi, my name's Hannah Layland. It's nice to meet everyone. So my dad, who normally sits behind me over there, is not here today, but we're the architecture team working on this project. Um, it's definitely a project close to our hearts as my brother, um, after nearly ten years in addiction and many rehabs, actually was a client of McLatt. So we're both honored to work on this space. Um, and this building is just so well-seated to this purpose. It's quite incredible. So if I have permission to share my screen, can walk you through the project. Everyone can see the screen? Okay, great. Um, so if you're not familiar with the project, it currently looks like this with a beautiful mural done by a local artist. Um, so we started off by doing code review, looking at life safety issues and how to upgrade the space, um, using its existing, um, occupancy as a fire hall and adapt it to its purpose as, um, the recovery center. So this walk you through. Um, there's three entries into the space. We'll kind of four, um, one, two, three, and four. Hopefully you can see my cursor. Um, so the public will come through here and clients, um, would come through here. So this could be a flexible meeting space, um, A meetings, et cetera. These offices, as you can see, most of these walls hatched in gray are actually existing walls. So there isn't really that much to, um, change from the existing space. Um, so the clients would come into their entry area. Um, there's a meeting space here, another meeting area here that could act as a dining area. There's a kitchen, and then they could come up the stairs to their residence. Um, on this side, so there'll be ten rooms, um, single bed, single occupancy rooms and, um, a shared washroom. Um, I mean, there wasn't really much more to discuss because it's, it's not really changing much from its original, uh, design. So you can see there's, we did a historic search, um, and came about all these photos and we're kind of just restoring it basically back to what it was intended to be used for as a fire hall, but for recovery space. So thank you. Let me know if you have any other questions.
Thank you so much. Um, do you, uh, Robert or Sean, do you have any follow-up before we turn over questions to the Assembly?
No, you.
Okay, so questions from, from the committee? Any questions? Uh, I'm not seeing, oh, Director Fall?
Make a comment. Looks, uh, looks nice to me.
Thank you. So, um, I guess a question for staff, whether the, whether, does this have to go to the board for any kind of change in use, or is it basically considered, um, is this just in line with what's already been approved?
Through the chair, if Patrick Deveraux is on, you can answer that.
Mr. Deveraux.
All right, Chair. Um, yes, uh, it's sort of, uh, in line with all previous approvals. Um, the board do, it does have to approve, uh, the, the permission to renovate the building though.
Okay, so will this go directly to the board, um, just with a staff recommendation, brief, a report attached to it?
Yes, Chair.
Okay, so just, uh, unanimous consent from the committee to send this to the board for approval would be in order, I suppose. Okay, I'm seeing nodding heads. Great, I think that was unanimous. Okay, so thank you very much. I think that's, um, pretty, oh, hang on, somebody's waving their hands. Director McCormick?
Yes, um, thank you, Chair. A quick question. It's being used now for primary, um, treatment or primary care. If the need comes about.
But Director McCormick, it's not being used yet.
Uh, will be, is being planned to be used, um, for primary, and if the decision was made to need to switch to secondary care, does that require a change in the building, or does the building renovation now facilitate either?
Who wants to take that?
It'll, it'll, it can be utilized for either.
Good, good planning, uh, making it flexible for either, either option. So that's great. Any, no other questions from committee members? I don't see any more waves. Okay, so that's great. Couple weeks, so, um, you should find out after that.
That's right. In a couple of weeks, you cut out there.
Yeah, the board meeting will be at the end of the month, so it would just go to that board meeting for approval.
Perfect, wonderful.
Great, great. Well, thank you very much, and thank you, and thank you to Ms. Leland as well.
Yeah, thank you, all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Great, so moving on to delegation four point two, Johan Murray and Chris Arthur, Vancouver Coastal Health Authority regarding draft capital plan update and cost share requests. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Good, good afternoon, and, uh, thank you for accommodating us within your agenda for today. Uh, so can I share my screen or?
You should.
Thank you. Oopsie.
Like, oops.
Uh, right, you can see it, right?
Yes.
Thank you. So just, uh, the land acknowledgement, um, that we are gathered here on the traditional lands of the Musquiam Squamish and Slavutu peoples. Um, VCH's, um, uh, strategic priorities are really focused on exceptional care, innovation for impact, and a great place to work, uh, just as a backdrop. Uh, when we're looking at, uh, capital for the health authority, we are breaking it down between basically three categories, that being facilities, equipment, and IMITS. And then, uh, for the breakdown, um, kind of splits it between acute care, uh, primary care, long-term, and complex care, mental health and substance use, uh, infrastructure upgrades across multiple facilities and a research and, uh, corporate. We currently have, uh, under our jurisdiction, which includes Providence Healthcare, uh, twelve hospitals, twelve long-term care and complex care facilities, uh, six mental health, uh, and substance use facilities, and several primary care and community support facilities. Um, when we're looking at the historical investment that we have had into the infrastructure, uh, we are at a point where there is a critical need, uh, to really upgrade our core infrastructure across our aging, uh, facilities. We are currently looking at developing deferred maintenance strategies, uh, that will, uh, address some of our larger initiatives, uh, such as elevator replacements or upgrades, uh, piping, roofs, et cetera. Within the next, uh, foreseeable future, we are looking at, um, seeking, uh, Ministry of Health approval for the following long-term care expansion projects, which includes, uh, Hilltop House, um, in Squamish, uh, Powell River Evergreen, we're looking at a replacement of that existing facility. And at Lions Gate, uh, there is a similar Evergreen, a long-term care facility, uh, which will be replaced in conjunction with an expansion to Berkeley Care. Uh, on the VGH campus, we have a facility called Banfield, uh, that we are looking at replacing. And then outside of the long-term care, one of our other key initiatives that's, uh, been identified, uh, by Ministry of Health for support, um, is, um, the development of a, um, downtown, uh, community healthcare center, which is located at fifty-eight West Hastings. We are actually, um, only participating, excuse me, in that facility as a tenant, uh, but the tenant improvement, um, is, is actually a substantial amount for which we need to seek, um, ministry approval. Uh, this is just a quick snapshot of, and I'm not going to go over it, um, just the various facilities. Um, we may or may not miss one or two of them here, but hopefully this is, uh, quite comprehensive. When we are looking at, um, our equipment on an annual basis, uh, we are investing approximately, uh, forty million. Uh, that honestly is not sufficient for us to sustain. Um, when we're looking at, um, what we are doing right now, we are really, uh, in a very much of a break-fix mode with limited, uh, consideration for emerging technologies. And we are really, uh, unfortunately, uh, heavily relying on hospital foundations and auxiliaries to support, uh, the majority or quite, uh, quite a bit of our equipment purchases. And as you can see on the slide here, there is a, uh, substantial, uh, contribution coming from, uh, the hospital foundations and auxiliaries, both within VCH and Providence Healthcare. The next slide is just a grouping or categorization of, um, some of our equipment, uh, breaking it down between diagnostic equipment, surgical equipment, uh, monitoring and treatment, which is really, uh, the bedside. Uh, then life support, uh, medical device processing, this is the MDRD, uh, which is really supporting surgery. Uh, food services, where we have a substantial amount of equipment within various facilities. Uh, the pharmacy, the lab, and then our minor equipment, which are the beds, the stretchers, et cetera, as you can see, uh, in, 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 in the little, uh, a picture that we've included here. The next slide is trying to just address our IMITS investment. Um, and this is quite the view from, uh, two thousand and six, seven, uh, right up to, uh, the current fiscal, fiscal twenty-two. Uh, we have had quite a bit of a dip in the investment, which really started in oh eight, oh nine, and that was due to the, uh, financial situation at the time. Uh, and we have slowly been ramping up with a large investment in our, uh, clinical system, which is, um, CST, a center-based platform, which will be rolled out across the health authority, including Providence Healthcare. The next slide is kind of just speaking to that, um, CST system or clinical and systems transformation with a bit of a roadmap as to where we are at the moment in that rollout. Currently, uh, as, as we're speaking, the focus is on, um, children's and women's, uh, within Vancouver. The next large site, um, will be, uh, VGH, which will be coming in the fall. Um, while they are doing, um, children's and women's, there is also a focus on sea health at the moment. The next slide, this is just a very, very high-level overview, and the reason for this is that uh, we are only presenting to the VCH Board, um, in early May. Uh, the original plan was for late March, uh, or April, but that has, uh, moved on. Uh, so we will at one point, uh, come back to you with the, uh, board-approved, uh, budget for the health authority. But this essentially is, um, speaking to our revenue and the different streams of revenue and, and where it's coming from with a large, uh, chunk of it right at the top, uh, coming from the Ministry of Health. That is tied into some of the very large initiatives, uh, such as, um, Alliance Gate ACF, uh, which has got a substantial, uh, ministry amount, uh, in that project. There is the St. Paul's Hospital, um, replacement. We are also focused on, um, uh, a redevelopment project of the Richmond Hospital and Campus. And, and lastly, there are multiple long-term care facilities as well as an, uh, operating room, uh, expansion at Vancouver General Hospital. Which I think, I'm sorry, I should have spoken to this on this slide. Uh, you will see right at the top there, those are the, what is, what is termed the priority investment projects. Um, the various ones, um, that is underway here. Uh, you'll see, uh, Dockwood Long-Term Care Facility, that is a Vancouver-based, uh, project. Some of the other, uh, projects, uh, which is in the hopper for the long-term care is currently not within the plan, uh, due to the fact that we require a Treasury Board approval before we can actually include them here. Onto the next slide, this is just a view of our current net, uh, net new funding that is available for, uh, fiscal twenty-three or, um, FY twenty-three, or in our terms, it's fiscal twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, which closes off for us in March, uh, of next year. So the Ministry of Health, uh, funding is approximately sixty point one million. Uh, they provide us five point six million in carbon-neutral capital, uh, for some key initiatives there. And then the Restricted Global Operating Fund is, is really an accumulated accumulation of, uh, previous surpluses uh, that we are putting towards capital. The nineteen point three million is an annual allocation, uh, that we receive, and that number have not changed in the past fifteen-plus years, unfortunately. And that brings me to, uh, the cost share requests, uh, that we want to put forward to you today. And, uh, I will, uh, just walk through them very quickly, and, uh, if there are any questions, I'm, I'm going to hand it over to Chris, uh, to address, uh, those, uh, very specifically. Um, so the projects, uh, that we are seeking your support for, uh, is to modernize the clean and dirty dumb waders at the Powell River General Hospital. There's an OR mechanical room boiler and direct digital control upgrades, uh, that is required. The third one is a replacement of the high-voltage breaker and transformer number two. And, um, I believe, uh, this one is, um, as, as per the note, uh, twenty-five years old. Uh, the fourth one is an upgraded to the, uh, generator paralleling gear. And lastly, the phase-two, uh, replacement of the Powell River General Hospital roof. The total project cost amounts to one point nine million. And the request, uh, to you is, uh, for a forty percent cost share, if that is doable, uh, for a total price tag of rounded eight hundred thousand. So, Madam Chair, that concludes, uh, my, my presentation to you, and any questions, we are happy to, uh, to take those.
Great, thank you so much. Um, so questions from the Assembly, and if you want to just stop sharing, then we can see everyone.
I will do that, thank you.
Thank you.
Questions?
Any hands? I'm seeing no hands. So, um, for process purposes, this will, uh, we're receiving this for information, and I assume that staff will be absorbing this and coming back to the committee at a future meeting with a report on this. Who would like to speak to this from management?
Through the chair, if Linda Greenin, our, uh, financial officer is on, she can, uh, respond.
Ms. Greenin?
Thank you, Chair. Um, yes, I think a motion would be in order to, um, ask staff to bring a report forward on the cost share request.
Okay, so would someone like to make that motion? That's Director Brabazon and seconded by Director McCormick. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing no hands, all in favor? Any opposed? Carried, that was unanimous. Okay, great. I think that's good. So thank you so much, um, Mr. Murray and Mr. Arthur.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, your time. Thank you, and, um, uh, enjoy the long weekend. Happy Easter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You too.
Yeah, thank you. Enjoy the weekend.
Bye.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on, uh, we have no unfinished business and no correspondence, so we're on to reports. Seven point one, Powell River Regional Hospital Board Engagement Options. There is a recommendation, and the report is from the CAO. So does the CAO, CAO have any comments before we consider the motion?
Uh, through the chair, it's, uh, quite a broad type of initiative, if you will, and, uh, I think that the board needs to, uh, really narrow it down as to what their desires are going forward. I, I think there are a number of different avenues, uh, that could be considered, uh, because it's in very, uh, clear that each regional district or each regional hospital district is, uh, doing something similar, or maybe just, uh, you know, a tweak-off, but, uh, everybody is doing something in advocacy. It's just a matter of how deep they are going. So it's up to the board, and I think that's something that the board has to finally decide upon.
Thank you. Um, so does someone want to just make the motion that's, um, on the agenda? Move the motion, Director Dowd, seconded by Director Brander. Um, any comments or discussion on that motion?
Director Dowd?
Okay, Director Dowd?
Yeah, I'm just reading through the report. It seems to me that it's a really good idea that we spend some time thinking about where we might want to go. Particularly, uh, when we get, we can bring it back up in September and think about it a little more deeply. Look at going forward, but, uh, you know, really at that. Look at going forward, but, uh, you know, really at that time we'll be making, that's a pretty curious bunch of decisions to make. And in view of the October election and we're, we change, uh, some of the faces on the board, I think it'd be a good idea to maybe. Have another look at this in September and then move it forward, but try to complete a plan with, when the new board is in place.
Great, thank you. Uh, did I see Director McCormick's hand up?
Um, you did, Chair, thank you, but Director Dowd asked, asked the question I was going to ask.
Okay, Director Brabazon, did I see your hand?
No.
Okay, anyone else? So I assume that by postponing it to, for consideration in September, I think that, you know, as Director Dowd mentioned, it's right before the election in October, so. You know, I think the, some discussion could happen and then recommendations could be put forward to the next term and, and the next, um, board could make considerations after that. So I think that's. I, I feel comfortable with this motion that is on the floor. So if there's no other comments or questions, I'm going to call the question. All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Great, thank you. That's carried and we have no new business, so it's question period.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I don't have any questions this afternoon.
Okay, thank you, Mister Glinsky. And I'm going to say that there is no in camera session, so we are adjourned at four fifteen. Thank you, everyone.